When you look at this, probably 20 years ago, I was told by an auditor who was doing it at that time said, this gives you an idea based on the Consumer Price Index, if the city could increase business licenses or you're overstating the cost of them. I'm not soliciting increase of them, but once again, two auditors now, same question. Many states wants it. I'd really like to have a clarification from somebody at the state to say what this means. I mean, amount over, under allowable amounts, and it's under by $78,000? Does that mean we're within the law? And what would be the other way? What do we got to do then? Go back and do a refund? I'm assuming the same as all of us. Okay, that's all I have. Good job passing the floor. Thank you. A good honor to connect with you and to get your head on the work of it, but thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion, acceptance of the year end, June 30th, 2022 fiscal audit for the city of Ely? Second?
Oh, sorry.
Are there any, here in discussion?
I'd like to ask the city treasurer, what was her opinion of working with this firm, other than one we had, one of the one in our office, or affect the rest of the council?
I enjoy working with them. I would say there's occasional times I get tired of the questions, but they handle my response as well. I'm not sure, so I'm very grateful.
Did they provide the guidance you need for moving forward?
Oh, gosh, yeah. They've been more than willing on any of the items that I'm unsure, teaching me, showing me how to come up with some of the answers. They've been trying to work with, and they've been working with me really great about entries that they've done in the past that I longed for me to do myself, and they've been great patient and they've been working with me to teach me some of that stuff.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any opposed? Or did you count? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That should care us. And I'd like to say thank you to Treasure Trust, because the money is always the hardest thing, so I think it seems like our hard job a lot of people want. Number two, council members, city treasurer and trust, discussion for possible action, acceptance of corrective action plan for findings noted in the city's FY 2022 audit. My responses were in the back of my head, so I had to own the second finding, I did talk to taxation, and she, she said this happens, that I just need to make sure as soon as I find out about it, timing is going to be that to let them know that they weren't too upset about this one.
Okay, we got a question. So this is what you're going to send to the state, this corrective action plan?
Yes.
Okay, that first one says 2021-001.
That's what's in the audit.
And what?
That's what the audit page finding is.
Oh, of that register, okay. Okay, then budgetary compliance, unexpected rules such as the role of...
Hopefully, we don't have any more of those.
Right, thank you.
Do I have a motion to accept the corrective action plan for findings noted in the city's FY 2022 audit?
So who'd?
Second?
All in favor? I, all opposed? Number three, city, yes, because we said we were, I would, you know, I just need to state that I would just read each item, yeah.
So we'll be opening all three items together.
Okay, we will open and do all the three items together. White Pine Youth Center, Inc., representative Lynette Guss, discussion for possible action, presentation regarding a temporary safe housing development and requested support donation, approval to donate APN 001-163-05, owned by the city of Ely, to the White Pine Youth Center, Inc., for the development of temporary safe housing, or approval to trade APN 001-163-05, owned by the city of Ely, for a portion of APN 001-163-07, owned by the White Pine Youth Center, Inc., for the development of temporary safe housing with possible approval to pay for the necessary survey, and discussion regarding approved uses, uses of opioid sedative honeys of the city of Ely will receive with possible commitment regarding the use of those funds.
Right, okay. I'm Lynette Guss, and I am a Division of Probation Officer.
No, no, pull it right.
Yes, okay. Okay, so I'm one of the Division of Probation Officers, and I'm also a board member of the White Pine Youth Center, okay? So the youth center was born in 1960s, and it's a Bible one, three C, nonprofit corporation. The main purpose of it is to support youth related profits and to promote activities and whatnot. So through years of experience, the seven judicial district court judges have identified that there is a substantial need in our area for safe temporary housing for victims of domestic violence, their families, their kids, drug court recipients who themselves, and if they have children, that they need to get out of their houses, they need a safe place to go to get on their feet. Also for just parents and children in our community that have been abused by their parents or social abuse, they need a safe place to go. So the project that we're doing is intended to provide a short term, point to three week housing establishment for them, so that they can go, the individuals can go with their kids, they can have a safe place to live, so they can get sustainable, suitable, permanent housing on their own, so that's the idea of it. So the proposed location for the two safe houses is on property that's owned by the center, and it's adjacent to the seven judicial district court drug court building. The center plans to purchase two tiny houses, the costs of them are approximately $146,000. And the site improvements would be like electricity, your sewer and water extension, that's estimated to be about $50 to $60 additional dollars. Okay, so I came today to ask you guys, and I'm requesting financial assistance to this community project. In addition, no, I'm not quoting any of those numbers. So the other agenda item that, to paint the small triangles, city parcel that's located in the middle of the center's land. And so it's deemed that that is useless land to you guys, but it's also impeding us putting our tiny houses on our own property. So I guess if the city would like to, if interested in doing a land swap of our land that's located on Altman Street, so it would be a benefit to you guys if you used to enhance your entrance into the area of Ely, that's where the tip rate coming to town, so you could put a product for lots of good stuff right there. Judge Ferment is here, and he will address any questions you guys had, financially, time frames, anything else like that. And just on a side note, we will also, the center will be asking the county, large corporations that do business in White Pine County, plus the E L Court combination to support this project. I'll go over to Judge Ferment.
BJ, thank you. Thank you.
With your permission, yes, I'm Gary Ferment, and I'm one of the judges, district court judges in the seventh judicial district court. And we appreciate Lynette coming forward today, and I can give you a little bit more of a backstory with your permission, as to how this came about, why the courts have seen this as something that's really important to our community. Approximately five or six years ago, Judge Dervis, you and myself, really saw the need for temporary housing, and not only appearing in our court, in the situations of child abuse and neglect cases, as well as cases involving domestic violence at the felony level, although many of these cases are handled in the justice court level, as well as in the municipal court. And in cases of abusive neglect of children, there was a need for one of the partners, one of the mates, spouses, to find safe housing for the perpetrator, and their children as well. And we've had a very, very difficult time finding safe temporary housing. And a lot of other jurisdictions do have safe homes. Elko has a large center, as far as a nearby community, that they've developed for a number of years. And the important thing is just to provide some safety and security on a short term basis, so that these victims and their kiddos, who many times are victims as well, can be, like I said, housed in a safe environment. It could be a day, it could be two days, maybe a week or two weeks, until they can find alternate sources. And we started on this project probably about three or four years ago, I first discussed this, and maybe it's longer now, with Melody Hall, when Melody was the mayor. And I talked also with Mayor Robertson about it a year and a half ago, two years ago after he became mayor over the old courthouse, about this project, and why we hadn't brought it to you beforehand, is we just couldn't find a good lead on, on housing, something that we could place on this property, something that we felt was, we could make the budget, all right, with enough contributions towards this project, that we could make this viable. And, and the costs have gone up, and we thought we had a line on it about a year and a half that started going, but then with the recession and pandemic, the prices of a couple of modulators that we scoped out just went through the roof. And so we finally got in touch with a person we contacted several years ago regarding some alternate construction, Stephanie Hughes, from Housing Partners International. I believe she's made a presentation, or someone from her company's made a presentation with respect to tiny homes. And those homes really seem to suit our purpose. They were small in nature, we could have them constructed so they'd be Spartan, you know, that they would be safe, they would be useful for the purpose, nothing elegant, but they would, they would be somewhere that would, that would be safe, and that they would be within our budget. She's provided to us a cost of about $146,000 in a written proposal to us for the two homes delivered. And we've reached out, well, we reached out a couple of years ago, and we thought we could go forward with the project to some contractors, and we did, and we again reached out to them again, in the community, Guss O'Flaherty, a couple of years ago, to Richard Spelz. And our budgets now are for the site improvements, for the electrical utilities, and for the water sewer, are about 20K each, you know, it would take a few thousand dollars to put, to put those homes in. Last year, we had sort of a, I wouldn't say it was a summit, that may be a mini summit of law enforcement officials, justice court judges in the seventh judicial district, including White Pine County, representatives from the Division of Child and Family Services, our drug court treatment provider, as well as from victim's witness, Maxine Lance participated, they were a member of judges. And for White Pine County, that was specific, this need was specifically identified as one of the top priorities that we should focus on. And so, you know, we continue to run with that, and we would like to get those, those houses placed on our property if at all possible. We could have delivery of these houses almost whenever, given a few months' lead time, that quickly. And we anticipated that when we come to the city first, this is why Lynette came, she's one of the board members, and district court judges cannot directly solicit funds, so just talking about just the backdrop of all of this, and how important it is, you know, that we see a need as far as being within the court system. And if there's anything else that you can tell me about the project, you know, I certainly am open to any questions that you might have. But I do know that we're, we're, we're going to reach out to, or Lynette's going to reach out on behalf of the youth center who owns the property. That, that center, by the way, the youth center was created in the 60s, and it was a result of the Bradley family. Bud Bradley and his family lived there for many years, he ultimately moved to Reno, and he became a prominent attorney, the son of his son, was Bradley and tried to build a law firm, and that firm still goes on today, but their roots came from White Pine County. And after that, youth center was poor, it was even late 50s, early 60s, they in fact donated some land near Lund, which the center had sold to, and had some money to go ahead and to help with prior activities that the center's been involved with. But because these, this project involved kids in many, in many ways, we felt that this was a good project to pursue. And the center owns this land, this land with the drug court building, we call it the drug court building, but our treatment center is located, it used to be owned by Support Inc., and Norm Borringer gifted that to the White Pine Youth Center a number of years ago. And he also gifted the property that's adjacent to, I believe you have the parcel now, that is just north of where the center is now, that's adjacent to Altman Street. And when I first talked about what we were proposing to do with the mayor at that time, Mayor Van Camp, and then with Mayor Robertson, I couched it in terms of, you know, we'd love to do a land swap with you, to give you that land that's adjacent to our property. We couldn't use it, we didn't see any, any future commercial development for drug court functions, it's, it's too small to build on, but we felt that that would enhance the city of Ely as, as potentially a gateway site, site to develop, to put in lawn, to put in landscaping, to put in a welcome to Ely site, because as most, all of you are sure familiar, when you come to Ely, as you turn your vehicle, that's the first part of Ely that you see, because you make sort of a gentle right hand turn coming in, you focus right there, your sight focuses exactly there, and of course you have the RV park on the left. So we, we did think that that was a very useful land to us, and we wanted to provide that to the city for use. I don't think the city can develop it with any buildings or anything else, I don't think the size of the parcel, the shape is conducive to it. I know, I know how it's agendaed on here, but that's, somehow the city of Ely still has a sliver of land, bisects our property, BJ could talk to you a little bit about it. And just to clear title of it, if nothing else, we, we want to have the city donate that land, even if we never put a project on there, just to the youth center, so we can clear up that portion. That's, that's what I can tell you about it. We think it's, it's a worthwhile project for the citizens of Ely. Most everyone lives in White Pine County that comes to our court with these particular issues, and so that's why we see it's a need, so. Lynette, can I talk to you, anything else about it? If you want any more background, I'm happy to give it to you.
Judge, go ahead.
Yes.
Go ahead. I got a question here. Sure. I've talked with you about five, six months ago.
Correct.
Are these two homes include the one you and I discussed with Stephanie?
Uh, you know, I don't recall the one that we discussed.
You, the one you discussed was domestic violence of adults for both male and female adults.
Right, yeah, it could be, you know, most of the time, females are the victims in those situations, and you have a small portion of male adults that are victims of domestic violence, and that does happen, but you know, probably 95% of the victims are females, but it is the adults. And, you know, in many cases, mom or dad, whoever's the victim, have kids, I mean, sometimes they're just, you know, the two partners, or husband and wife, that are involved with no children. But most often, we, we see, see these occurring with younger adults, rather than, rather than older adults being involved in domestic violence cases.
Okay, so we're still just talking two tiny homes?
Two tiny homes, yeah. We didn't have really room for more than that. And just a little bit more information, if I'd have brought that up, it would trigger the thought of mine, we anticipate the use not to be nonstop, I mean, thank God, you know, for the community, because we don't have that, that level of violence and abuse, which is good. But we, we see these homes being occupied a couple of times a month, maybe for two, three days at a time, sometimes longer. The persons that are involved in our drug court program, I mean, there's a lot that they have to do, and, and for those persons and/or their children, they may be there for, for a couple of days, and we want to get them from where they are, which is basically couch surfing with all of their friends that either sell them or supply them drugs. In most cases, when they come to our court for drug involved cases, unfortunately, well, fortunately for their families in some respects, they abandon these people because of these persons' disorders, they push their families away who dearly love them, but they harden their families so much, you know, by stealing from them, you know, you know, by, by just being the way that they are and being disavowed from their families, that they have no return to. And so we need to get them away from their drug user friends and their kiddos immediately, because that's one thing they cannot do, is associate with people that use, because if they continue to do that, they'll never change their behavior, they'll never manage their disorder, they'll always continue to use. So that's sort of step one, is to get them to a safe place, and we assist them in providing, in locating other housing through our drug court team, through Ms. Adams, whether it's public housing, we've got a lot of leads with, with our drug court team to, you know, get them into somewhere else that's stable and safe. But they need that temporary place for right now, and we would do the same thing Maxine Lance would, with victim witness, for victims of domestic, domestic violence, Fay Cavender, those persons involved with the Division of Child and Family Services, you know, they would help as well. I don't know if that's answered your question.
Yeah, I just want to ensure we have two now, that's going back six months ago when you were...
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's the two, two tiny homes.
Okay.
I think they're about 400 square feet, they're not big.
No.
But they're not, but they'll use, they'll suit our purposes. They, they have, they have a bedroom with a shower tub combination for the kiddos. In the other room, it's, it's a sitting area, they, we could put a sofa in there, we would put a pullout bed, we are going to equip them with a small refrigerator and a microwave, not even putting a, an oven in there. And whoever is there is responsible, will have cleaning materials to clean it up, obviously, something else like this will, but somehow it'll get done. But we want them to clean it up to, to leave it as, as, as good as they want.
You know, I can continue with Mike, I'm all for supporting this right here, so I'm looking at it as a business thing, you know, the city's going to possibly make a monetary thing. Have you guys put together a business plan? As I look, you know, you mentioned, you got water and sewer hookups, you got electrical hookups, you've got fencing, security lights, the building inspector, we've been talking tiny homes, are they going to be on a permanent foundation? It goes on and on and on. Again, you know, that's the issue right there, is I, I would like to see a business plan here, just like you're going to build two homes, but what are you going to do? What do you need to do? What more check offs you're going to have to do to get this? Because the water and sewers from the city, you're going to come back asking for a waiver of water and sewer? Could have, we fight that all the time, you know, it's a good project.
So what a detailed plan.
Yeah, a detailed plan, you know, your, your very best estimate, because when you, are, are we the first ones getting this proposal?
You are, because, because of the land issue.
Okay, so I want to look at that land, you're right, it's a, like a triangle, about the only flat piece there, you know, and in my opinion, if we got anything left from you guys, I don't want to be where that big sign is, get money for rent off that. So, but anyway, then you mentioned in your letter, and it says, after completion, the homes will be leased to White Pine County to assist the center ongoing major repairs. Explain that to me.
I can tell you right now, they do it right now for us. The White Pine Youth Center owns the drug court building, we currently lease it to the county now, I think it's like a dollar a year, the county does the maintenance, and, and they pick up the utilities. And so the, the demand for the drug court building utilities is minimal, I mean, and we don't see any more because of just the fact that it's not going to be used that often for these two tiny homes. You know, as far as the water and sewer, I'm talking with Johnny O'Flaherty, he's indicated that the demand on the use of the drug court building is minimal, his proposal is that, that he be allowed, and we could talk it over with, obviously with your, your city engineer, to just extend out from the drug court building. And, and as, as far as the extension of those utilities, rather than to go back to the, to the main, so to speak, and hook up, he says that it's, it's just minimal. So we've looked at those costs, and the county has been so gracious in, in doing whatever maintenance is necessary for the drug court building for years now. So we have not approached the county with that, quite frankly, we don't anticipate resistance on that, we could get it, we could get it, but we're, we're not anticipating it just based upon the working relationship that the county's had with the seventh judicial district court in this particular piece of property.
Yeah, and I don't, again, I'm not against it, I'm just looking at the taxpayers involved in this right here, you know, I mean, it's a great location, the county's got way more land than we do, you know, but to have to move your own building someplace else, it just makes common sense there. But you know, I, I know it's on that victim witness services, it's care of the White Pine County Sheriff's Office, so, so they're contributing to this indirectly through which way?
What, the victim's witness?
Yeah, it says care of White Pine County Sheriff's Office.
Well, they, they work, the victim's witness works directly with all these victims. Are they, right?
Yeah.
So who, who supplies the funding for that?
Victims witness, they get their own grants, or yeah, they get their own money, the sheriff's office, you know. No, I don't, I don't...
Scott, I don't think you fund them at all, do you?
No.
No, we don't benefit from that at all, what it is, it's a tri-county grant between Lincoln County, White Pine, and Eureka, she applies for the grant, and we just, we are the board of supporter of the grant, so when she applies to that, she has the support of the sheriff's office and the county.
And we're not seeking any contribution from victim witness, Division of Child and Family Services at all.
Yeah, that letter is important, I understand that, I just see care of White Pine County Sheriff's Office.
Oh, yeah. So, and I wanted to add something to you, like, see, I'm sure you're aware, but I don't know on the assumptions, is that it is really hard to get out of this town, you need to get out of here. There is no mode of transportation out of here. Correct me if I'm wrong, Judge, but you know, when you're, we, years ago, we had a kid, it was on my case, so his mom needed to get out of here, they needed to get out of here, that. We have to, that's where Maxine comes in with victims, is they help make those transfers happen, but they need somewhere to go until the Elko can get them there, if they need to go to the height, and to go and talk to grandma and that kind of thing, it is so hard to get out of here. So, and you know, we have hotels, things like that, but they're not safe. They're not safe.
And then we have to move them or take them or kiddos on school too.
So just a couple of medias, some of that stuff for them.
And Judge, Lynette, the municipal court likely won't have a great need for any of these services, but would those, would the housing be available to the municipal court given a domestic violence victim has a need for those, for the housing?
Oh, certainly, certainly. Yeah, that's, that's where, where the light can come in, is in that scenario, yeah. The same is in justice court. Most of the cases are, are in, you know, either justice, as you know, justice court and municipal court, correct? So that's where you get a problem with them, when they come to the district court, they're felony cases, and so they're over, and those temporary issues have long been resolved on the DB. The immediacy is, is those cases that, that go to the municipal court or the justice court.
And human trafficking also?
Also, yeah, yeah, we didn't address that, but Homeland Security uses the safe houses in Elko as, as a temporary location, like a day or overnight, to help move victims of sex trafficking and victim, child victims of trafficking. And when they do that, they have either a male, they're accompanying a male or a female, they're accompanying a female from Homeland Security that will stay with them in the house, pending leaving like the next day or the day after, so they can move these victims to safer locations.
And we've had issues here in our local community.
I've got another question.
Yeah.
Okay, so these two homes, you get cash and buy them. How can you lease them back to the county if they were free?
Well, here's why, that if we listen to the county, part of the lease and contractual obligations are terminated.
Okay, so on my side, I like to say a business plan, because when I look at the land, your building's up here, the triangular piece is lower, you know, something's going to flow down, but the, the main sewer is higher, I like to hear how, I'm not a contract man to me, but Johnny O said, it'll work, it's fine with me, but I just think those need to be answered for, for my sense of well being, or you want to call it.
He, he didn't, he didn't see a problem, his quote's about 20K.
Okay.
That's if he didn't have to go to the main to hook up, right? So if he could do, if he could do, if he could extend off the, the current building.
And that would be a toll thing for our toll enforcement. You know, that, that's, it's tiny stuff, but I like to see the tiny homes in there, I know these are scaled down on the inside, the ones I've stayed in, they're fun, they're nice, I want to see that happen in this community. Down under the property Mr. Chachus is talking about, some of them lots, they're so small, just, they're fine, but we have to get a... We have to get a start somewhere, and this could be.
I don't know what you're talking about, moving to housing.
These homes will be nice, but they're going to be, we want them spartan on the inside. Okay, so I think whoever's in there, if they were inclined to do so, would do minimal damage, be easy cleanup. And we don't, we want the purpose, we don't want everybody to stay for a living, they just can't.
Help them, you know, when they're being.
So I have a couple of questions, is there anything else here? No, I don't. So I'm looking at three and four easily linked together, but we need to have some more conversation about number five. I'm just not sure how to tie all of these together, or if we're taking these one at a time.
Well, we can discuss it all together, and then whatever order the council would like to.
Well, can I, can I, um, talk about number five? It's my understanding that we have opioid, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have opioid settlement monies that come to us every year. Is that a certain amount every year, or could it be?
So I don't have to ask you a few questions, but is there, let me ask you everything at one time. Is there a certain amount? Could it increase from year to year? And I guess I'm just throwing this out more to the council, because this is obviously money that would benefit this, the people of this project. Is there a way for us to earmark money on a yearly basis, or?
Okay, that's basically what number five is about. As far as the amount, and Leo, correct me, to me, it's, right now, we've collected just over nineteen hundred dollars. I don't think it's going to be a huge amount, it's just we're required to put it to certain things. So yes, I'm just asking you guys, how you want to commit it, or what you want to commit it to. As far as the dollar amount, I would assume it's just going to stay pretty consistent?
It's likely to increase, but.
But are you going to come back to me next year and say, oh, by the way, it was nineteen hundred this year, but it's a million dollars next? I mean, how much?
I have more to do. Are all the students selling?
Um, no, there's still ongoing litigation, so it's up in the air, it's likely to increase.
But I don't think our percentage is ever going to be a huge amount, from what I understand of it. And to commit this now, and say it's committed to what you guys want to commit it to, until you change.
Okay, that would be my thing, if we possibly commit and just revisit it a year.
And I don't need to interrupt, there are Zoom participants who are having trouble hearing, so whenever one speaks, if you can speak close to the mic, they do hear it. Even if it's amplified at all.
Very good.
Yes.
Following up on what this city treasurer, the documents supplied here, you know, the city got nineteen hundred eighty-one dollars. The same sheet, the county got two hundred sixty-one thousand one seventy-nine. So that's substantial difference. Go ahead, Gary.
I can address that too. We haven't approached the county. They're, they, together with some of the larger corporations, are next. We anticipate the county being very generous in helping sort the project. But we think everybody needs to be amplified, in the substantialst possible. If it can fund the whole project, that would be great. If it can't, then we tend to go, the U Center's going to go to the Euphoric Foundation. But we felt it, because I thought this about a year ago, that they need some community buy-ins and commitment to this, other than saying, we support it. You know, and show that there's a financial commitment from the community to help this. And that would, if we had a deficiency at the end of all of this, when the U Center went to the Euphoric Foundation, that would be a lot better for us, for the U Center, in this presentation of the Euphoric Foundation to wrap up the balance of the funding. So, yeah, yeah, they have a lot, and they're going to get more. That was just a year, I think they're going to do it for ultimately a couple of million, okay?
Yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, that's fair observation, but, so we're not leaving that option.
Okay, so that leaves in the, you know, something I'm band-lingering about, once again, you know, that item number three is a request and support donation. You know, there's not a dollar amount requested, so this is right, I think this is all good, getting it up to the public. But until we get all the partners who's going to get in the game on this here, I feel the land, we'll discuss that in there, I haven't talked to BJ about the land thing, the position of that, you know, swap list is giving it up. But as a monetary donation, I'd just like to see what other folks in the, what, after your different groups, we may have more money than, you know, to do, it's a great program, don't get me wrong there, but again, at this time, I, well, I'm not making no motion about any monetary thing. Nineteen hundred dollars is nothing. You know, I don't know if that's a year, it says it'll go for eighteen years.
Can we maybe give BJ just to talk about the land? Because it sounds like we need the land to start, to just get the ball rolling, is that kind of the thing here? So, kind of to appease what you're talking about there, maybe we can discuss this land thing, maybe figure out a solution on the land, so they can at least get the ball rolling. It's hard to get a business plan if you don't know if you can actually get a business going, so maybe we can.
This isn't a business.
Yeah, exactly, it's not a, so I don't even want to call it a business.
We give you what you need, so you can.
Yeah, so you can come up with a plan, at least, you can say, okay, you could go to a contractor and say, okay, we have the land, here's what we have, and come up with some more concrete numbers, and then that way, we could maybe talk around, you don't want to motion.
Carol, we have the numbers. We've got concrete numbers, I mean, we've got a couple of thousand here and there.
So is that a couple of thousand?
Two, probably two ten. Okay, so we're probably, we're pretty close in that way.
Yeah, I was thinking, like, let's get the ball going, so that, because you're right, it's not a business. So at least get, let's get that portion going, so that we can get you guys moving.
And I agree with that, I agree with that, and I agree with Jim, but, so they don't have to just keep coming back for each thing, and we just take a minute to think, once we've done this land use, how we want to do the money thing, because I don't think they want to have the money, but we don't want them to have to keep coming back, moving back, moving back. So maybe, could we do the, as you said, the land use first?
Yeah, maybe BJ can say something about that. Maybe just do it next week.
Right, three and four together.
You know, I think you guys got an exhibit in there of where this property is up there. So there's that little, small piece up there, that's the city, which tries to kind of, for lack of a better word, encroaches and minimizes their ability to actually develop this piece the way they want to. And so their request was to come back in, to look at the possibility, do a land swap, as far as giving you some down on there, Alton Street, with exchange, or this triangle piece that makes those land available. I'm supportive of that, I also see on here the possibility of, you know, donating that little small triangle piece that's really not worth much anyway. They're supportive of making a land swap, you know, I'm just going to come back in here and say, we consider the land swap. We may consider the land swap, and the reason I say that is because on the next phase of Alton Street, the intention is there will be these sensible signs. And so that would probably be an ideal location for the sensible sign to go, because when they first started working with Alton Street project, you know, quite a few years ago, they were doing that, there really wasn't a great place for it, so they were kind of moving it up in the right way, and up on the hills, making it more difficult and more expensive, so. Not that that would necessarily benefit the city, because the city is paying for that sensible sign, but overall, if you drive into the city, it'd probably be a nice place for that sign to be located.
What's the size of that piece?
Uh, I don't have it, because it's just that little teen triangle.
Yeah, there's that little triangle, yeah. Is it comparable to, I guess, to the land swap, are we talking about the little piece to the left of the, this piece there, where we're talking about, is it a swap, is this for this?
Gary, where's, exactly where you're thinking?
Gary.
So I'm just trying to understand, are we talking land swap? Obviously, it's a triangle piece you want, are we trying to swap this piece over there?
This is the triangle here, and for this property here, we don't have a need for.
So all of it?
Yeah.
It's considerable.
Not necessarily all of it, because this is where the home would go, but a portion.
Yes.
Okay, so some, some. So I, okay.
BJ, could you show me that, what Carrie just, I got that figured out.
Yes, that's one that they're looking at, because basically, kind of, lots makes it difficult. So this is obviously the main, so not so much, hey, take all of this, because they need to get in and out of here, but some of this portion here.
So I should. So they need this piece to build the home, right? And then we get some here.
Oh, I know.
Some are, we, I mean, compared to size, probably just.
BJ, could you speak to, whether a survey would be required if this swap would happen?
There would have, there wouldn't be a survey required, because usually be having to, you know, swap and create a parcel or something along those lines. I don't, I don't believe it would be, it'd probably just be a parcel map, or probably a merger, maybe a re-subdivision, where we put that back into the city's law, and then we actually take out a portion, or put that into the county's law, and then take out a portion of the county, so the city can come back in that first place. I mean, that's what I would envision, that would be beneficial to the town, with the sign and the application.
So should we, and I'm asking for help here, so that they can get the ball rolling, should we say something to the effect of that we will look at the survey and the swap and so forth in preparation for doing this swap?
What I envision to go on with this is the actual, you know, that you agree that, hey, we do want to make this happen. And then at that point in time, rather than go down and completing the survey right now, or giving you exact details of it, taking the time and the effort to make that happen, to come in and say, hey, we're not interested in this. I think that's the hurdle where they're trying to stop. And so if it is something that the city is concurrents with, and they want to proceed with, then we can take a step back and go look at more of the survey, come back in here, answer those exact questions, and square footage or square footage, and get something laid out, and go with the plan. We just didn't want to get too far ahead without the city.
BJ, the agenda item does allow for council to approve the, for the payment of the survey? Is that something that they would need to do tonight? More information on?
Well, I guess, let me, something I got to say about the payment here, I would go back in, and I would just do that under our normal city thing. I wouldn't be looking for any other additional payment on it. And one reason I'm saying, telling you that is because this project is truly what the project I rode my bike for three days in a row to raise money for. And so I surely don't feel correct in asking people to raise money, and then come back in and get paid on the backside. So I would want, I don't want to do that, I think it's just something that, with our normal monthly retainer that we do for the city, that we just do underneath that, which is just.
I'll make that motion.
What motion?
So I'll. Just get it off.
I know it's a tiny motion, but.
I'll move the, I'll do a land swap with APN zero zero one dash one six three dash oh five, for a portion of APN zero zero one dash one six three dash oh seven, and have the city review the survey.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd like to, I agree with that, but I'd like to hopefully, you can look at the map, you can drive a look at it, I don't want to be moving a lot of dirt, dirt curve. I don't want, look, the city planted a little pine tree a year ago there, it's in a hill, a tall hill right there. Toward that, you can see a flatter spot there, so if we pick a spot, it picks up with a lot less earth movement.
Okay, so, any codes?
Please.
I'm going to motion, I need a second.
I did.
You did. Okay, so.
Just need all. All of them.
All of them, I'm sorry.
All right.
Okay, all the codes? Okay, motion carries now. At least, we haven't dealt with the opioid monies, so that's the.
We haven't done number three, there's just the money portion of it, since we were talking about matters that you wanted to give out the number, sounds like Jim wants to maybe see a little more on presentation side.
So you want to see more of the business plan?
Yeah, more of the business plan.
So how do you want to word that?
We can't change the agenda, I guess, so table that, I'm right there. Part of it I like, you know, temporary, I can develop, that's going to go, but I don't see a business plan. You know, I have close to two hundred thousand, I don't care about that.
So we can't say pending?
Probably not.
Not at all?
I don't think so, because I think there's so much more money out there, I mean, right now, White Pine County's got two hundred sixty-one thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars. They could do the whole thing, don't put the whole burden on the city of Ely.
So.
We need to get more community involvement, I mean, it's a good idea, but everything you read in here, White Pine County, White Pine County, White Pine County, city of Ely, we need our land.
Favorite term, I think.
Jim, you're not going to see a business, this is not a business.
Well, what I mean, you're giving a detailed water, sewer, land, electrical fence, and I mean, give you the fencing, uh, security lighting, uh, O'Flaherty's, this, this, and this. The building inspector signs off that you're going to get these lands without a hard foundation on them, Gary. Because we go into this, and he comes in there, and he puts milk, everything's dead.
I understand that, I understand that part of it, but as far as the continued operations, the continued operations would be just like the U Center's operating now with White Pine County.
Well, I probably, I probably misstated it, I want to see your building design, how's that?
Of construction?
Construction, yeah.
Probably better wording?
Yeah, better wording.
Well, we have, we can give you the tiny homes now, as far as what they look like with the dimensions. We have those, and that's the, that's the design.
Okay, do you have a sign off by the building department?
Well, we got to get the land first before we go.
You just got the land, you just got the land.
Okay, so, I mean, that was, that was a first step. And just one issue, a comment that you made, as far as the county's money, the city, the city funding all this, and carrying the burden. That's not the case. We have a piece, well, you said, we have a piece of land that is virtually useless to the city, under these circumstances, okay? You couldn't do anything with that if you had to. And, you know, when I approached, a couple of, five or six years ago, first with Melody, and then with Nathan, you know, our thought was, let's give the city some land that's really valuable to them, that they can use to enhance the city. So we didn't want the city to carry the burden on this, and we thought that giving them that land that bordered Alton Street, that was a gateway to the city, so that they could, you know, put some type of development to enhance the city when persons came into the city, was huge for the city. And clearly, in their best interest, as far as trading away this triangle of land. And we talked about the county being involved with it, this isn't a county project, this is a White Pine Youth Center project who's bringing this together, the county doesn't own this land.